All right, everyone. It's currently 6:03. We're gonna go ahead and start tonight's meeting. Let's please take a row.
Commissioner Light Eight.
Here.
Commissioner Calandra. Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Kreiner. Commissioner Shergill. Vice Chair Bray. Chair Vang.
Here, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and please stand. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. I'll go ahead and read the procedures for tonight's meeting. This meeting is being conducted in person and electronically. For each matter considered by the commission, there will first be a staff presentation, followed by a presentation from the project advocate. Testimony from supporters of the project would then be taken, followed by testimony from those in opposition. The advocate will have the right to a final rebuttal presentation prior to closing the public hearing. In accordance with Section 13 of Article 2 of the Planning Commission Rules and Regulations Governing the Length of Public Debate, all public testimony from those in support and opposition of the project will be limited to three minutes per person. The three lights in the podium next to the microphone will indicate the amount of time remaining for the speaker. The green light will be turned on when the speaker begins. The yellow light will come on with the soft bell ring when one minute is remaining. The speaker should be completing the testimony by the time the red light comes on, with the fine bell indicating time has expired. All in-person public testimony must be presented to the commission at the podium. Any testimony that references race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, national origin, or any other classification protected under state or federal law in a derogatory manner shall be deemed irrelevant and will not be considered by the commission in making the same use determinations. If you challenge these matters in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in oral or written testimony or before the close of the public hearing. We'll go ahead and move to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Chair Vang, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Israel Trejo with the Planning and Development Department. There are no changes to the agenda, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any comments or motion from the commission to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Bray. We have a second by Commissioner Diaz. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Agenda is approved. We'll go ahead and move to consent calendar. Hopefully, commissioners, you had a chance to review all these important dates. This is for consideration of adopting the Fresno City Planning Commission meeting schedule for calendar year 2026, so make sure you schedule vacations around those dates, okay? Do we have any comments or motion from the commissioners to approve the consent calendar? All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Calandra. We have a second by Vice Chair Bray. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Consent calendar is approved. We have any reports from commissioners? Go ahead, sir.
So as we all know, holidays have started, so Fresno is very giving, our communities, our businesses. San Diego School District, we are holding a food drive. You know, we have started December 1st all the way till December 2nd. We will be supporting all of our needy families in the Fresno area. So all the people, you know, if you... All the parents, students, community members, business owners, if you could please support and donate any food items, and then we will be giving those away to the needy families because, once again, like I said, Fresno is very giving, and we're gonna continue sharing. That is so amazing about Fresno. I also wanna hear something, it was kind of amazing. Somebody sent me a song about Fresno, and it was very positive, and it actually made me very proud of my city, Fresno. It talked about how productive our land is, how amazing Fresno is. Anything you, any seed that you sow in the ground, it grows. So we're just proud of Fresno. Keep it up, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Do we have any other reports?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Kreiner.
I wrote a quick statement just to express my heart, just to keep it concise as possible, but, Chair, if you would allow me to. Chair, fellow commissioners, city staff, and members of our public, I wanna take a moment, not only as a planning commissioner, but as a father, pastor, community leader, and a man who cares deeply for our state and for our people. This past Saturday in Stockton, my hometown, was shaken by another act of senseless violence, a mass shooting that took the lives and injured others and sent waves of fear, grief, and trauma throughout the 209 zip code and across the entire Central Valley of our community. For me, the pain is personal. My family lives in Stockton. I had family and nieces that were near the location as they were eating at a pizzeria near the location. Mothers were crying over their children. The communities are gathering around the wounds, and words can barely touch nor can they heal the pain that we are in. We sit here today focused on land use zones, development, and long-term shaping of our city, but none of that matters if the people that we serve are not safe. If our families are not whole, if our communities are left to carry trauma with no relief. I want it understood that behind every map, every blueprint, and every policy decision are real people, sons, daughters, neighbors who live, whose lives can be changed in an instant by violence that should never be normalized. And as a commissioner, we may not be able to control the criminal behavior directly, but we do shape the conditions in which communities can thrive, heal, and grow. We shape neighborhoods, we shape opportunities, we shape environments that either strengthen families or leave them vulnerable. Commissioners, my heart is heavy, yet determined. Determined that we remain thoughtful and intentional, determined that we consider the human impact of every decision we make, determined that we build cities where hope is easier to find than fear and where young people see futures rather than funerals. To the families of Stockton, to friends, and to every resident that is affected, I stand with you, I'm grieving with you, and I carry you in my prayers, in my heart, and my word. Thank you, brother Chair.
We'll say it, Commissioner Kreiner.
And I wanna say too, Commissioner, what you just stated is exactly why I keep coming here every other Wednesday night. It's why I started doing it, so why I'm doing it.
Any other reports? I see none. We'll go ahead and move to new matters. This is item ID 251553, consideration of vesting tentative tract map number 6248.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rob Holt, supervising planner, planning and development. Before getting into this presentation, every time we have a planner who is presenting their first Planning Commission item, we like to do just a quick brief introduction of them before getting into it. And so today, I wanna bring forth Valeria Ramirez. She has been with us since July of 2023, working for the beautiful city of Fresno. And she received her bachelor's from Fresno State in Sociology in 2021. Since working with us, she has obtained her Master's of Public Administration from Fresno State, MPA, just this year, 2025. And she has been with us, working a lot on affordable housing projects and bills, and assisting us with that. As of the last year, has been assigned to take on more subdivisions in Fresno under my team. And tonight's one of those items, and this is the first one, so just gonna introduce Valeria Ramirez, and she'll take it away. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. As Rob stated, I am Valeria Ramirez, planner 2 with Planning and Development. And tonight, staff brings forth for consideration vesting tentative tract map number 6248, submitted by Granville Homes, and the related environmental assessment. Thank you, Carrie. Oh, that's giving a little word. Okay, so here is an aerial image of the proposed subdivision. It is located just south of North Alaconte Drive and west of North Portofino Drive. To the north, we have another proposed subdivision for single-unit dwellings. And then to the east, west, and south, we have the Copper River Country Club. And the subject property... Let's get to the next slide. There we go. And the subject property is designated for residential medium-low-density plan land uses, as well as property to the north. And then the surrounding area is designated for open space for the golf course with some additional adjacent residential plan land uses. And this particular proposed subdivision is approximately 26.33 acres in size, proposes 93 lots with a residential density of 3.53 dwelling units per acre. And the District 6 Project Review Committee met on September 10th to review this item and recommended approval unanimously. And the proposed subdivision meets and complies with all the development standards as iterated in the staff report in front of you. And here is just a quick snippet of what the proposed subdivision will more or less look like once the subdivision is built out. And staff recommends adoption of the environmental assessment and approval of vesting tentative tract map number 6248. And at this time, I open the floor for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we have the applicant here?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Brenda Cosio. I am here representing Granville Homes. First and foremost, just wanna thank you all for your time this evening. And ultimately, we concur with staff's recommendation for approval. Open to any questions.
All right, do we have any questions? Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So my question is, do you have, like, particular plans in that area, like, are they single-story, double-story?
There is a mixture of single-story and two-story homes. And for square footage ranges, it'd be beginning at roughly 2,000 square feet up to 5,000.
Also bigger, there are bigger homes.
Yes, there's a variety of options.
Oh, got it. And do you have a price range?
You know, it is always gonna be dependent on the market, but if I had to guess, you know, it would be beginning roughly in the 700s upwards to 3 million. And that would be for our state lots.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and go to the public. Do we have any individuals who would like to speak and support? See none. Any individuals who would like to speak in opposition? I see none. We'll close all public comments. We'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have any motions or any additional comments?
I'll make an emotion to approve this because, you know, we do have shortage of homes, and I think giving people options, varieties, it's amazing, you know, we gotta provide peoples with options.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Shergill. We have a second by Commissioner DeA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion's approved. We'll move forward with the next item on the agenda. This is item ID 251576, consideration of annexation application number P2300446.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Thomas Avich with the Planning and Development Department. Tonight, staff brings forth consideration of annexation application P23-0446, pre-zone application number P2300449, development permit number P2300702, and the associated environmental document. This application was submitted by Legacy Construction for the purpose of developing a medical office complex. The map above shows the project area, which is comprised of five parcels located on the southwest corner. the southwest corner of East Nease and North Willow Avenue, and is currently an unincorporated county island. The blue shading on the map represents the city of Fresno limits currently. The annexation boundary is indicated by the red dash line, including, includes 10.55 total acres, which consists of five parcels as well as the adjacent street right-of-way. The two southernmost parcels shown with the blue dash line represent 3.88 acres are undeveloped and proposed for development of medical and professional offices. The three remaining parcels closest to the intersection of East Nease and North Willow total 5.88 acres and are currently occupied by rural residential homes. These parcels are not included in the development area but are part of the annexation boundary. The surrounding properties within the general vicinity are fully developed commercial properties to the north and east, and a residential neighborhood to the west. A church property is located to the south. As mentioned in my introduction, the project is comprised of three components, an annexation, a pre-zone, and a development permit. The entire 10.55-acre annexation area is currently located within an unincorporated county island. The annexation application proposes to detach from the Kings River Conservation District and the Fresno County Fire Protection District and annex that 10.55 acres into the city of Fresno. The pre-zone application proposes to pre-zone 3.30 acres from the Fresno County AL-20 Limited Agricultural Zone District to the City of Fresno Community Commercial Zone District, and then 5.58 acres from the Fresno AL-20 Limited Agriculture to the Community Commercial and an annexed rural residential transition overlay applied over it. To help with the transition between change and zoning designations, the annex overlay would allow the continuation of agricultural and animal uses for the three rural residential homes. And then finally, the development permit proposes to construct three buildings to be utilized for medical, dental, and/or professional offices on the 3.38 portion of the project area. According to the Fresno General Plan Use Map, the subject properties are currently planned for commercial community land uses. The properties to the north are planned and zoned for commercial uses. The properties to the west and south are planned and zoned for residential medium-low-density uses. North Willow Avenue is the boundary between the city of Fresno and Clovis. The properties to the east are planned for general commercial, planned commercial center uses per the City of Clovis General Plan and Zoning Map. The pre-zone application request for community commercial zoning is consistent with the underlying community commercial planned land use designation. Again, the overall 10.55-acre annexation boundary is represented by the red dash line. The pre-zone boundary, which is represented by the green dash line, is 9.18 acres. Of that area, 3.30 acres are proposed for development of the medical office buildings in blue. Approximately 1.37 acres of the annexation boundary comprises public right-of-way, which is currently in the county and will be incorporated into the city. The proposed site plan is shown here. The development permit proposes to construct two 11,160-square-foot buildings, shown here in red, and one 11,780-square-foot building, shown in blue. And again, again, the buildings are to be utilized for medical, dental, or professional offices. A children's dentistry office is proposed to occupy the building shown in blue, and other tenants aren't identified yet. In addition, the project will provide on- and off-site improvements, including a Class 1 trail along Willow with one-drive approach, onsite parking and landscaping, and a six-foot concrete wall. A second-drive approach is proposed to utilize the adjacent private road on the adjacent church property to the south. According to the Development Code, medical and professional offices are permitted in the community, commercial community zone district with approval of a development permit. On July 22nd, 2021, a neighborhood meeting was conducted prior to the middle of the application, and no members of the public attended. On May 8th, 2024, the Council District 6 Project View Committee was provided opportunity to review the project, but the scheduled meeting was not conducted due to a lack of quorum. On November 13th, a hearing notice was mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject properties. One property owner of two of the parcels within the annexation and pre-zone area provided a letter stating they are opposed to being included as part of the annexation and pre-zone. The letter has been distributed to the commission and is included in the staff report as supplemental information. The opposition letter expressed concerns with potential financial implications of future connection to city utility services, as well as impacts to insurance and property taxes. They are also concerned with how the annexation will affect the existing uses of the properties as rural residential homes. No comments were received from the third property owner included in the annexation area. Apologies for that. Okay, sorry for that. In response to concerns raised related to future connection to city and sewer services, three of the five properties are already connected to city water, none of the three properties are, or none of the properties are connected to city sewer. The map depicts existing water service in the area with a blue line and existing sewer service in the area with a brown line. Generally, when an existing home is included in an annexation proposal that does not include development of those properties, the home can continue to utilize an existing well, but it cannot be replaced. Once sewer services are available, a home would be required to connect within five years if the property has an annex overlay applied. Department of Public Utilities also provides loan assistance programs to help with costs associated with sewer and water connections. And as discussed previously, to help with the transition between zoning designations, the annex overlay that will be applied will allow continuation of legally-approved agricultural and animal uses for the three remaining rural residential homes. The annexation boundary is consistent with the Cortez-Knox-Hurtsburg Local Government Reorganization Act, which establishes the procedures for local government annexations. The proposed annexation is also consistent with the policies of the Fresno Local Area Formation Commission, as the proposal is promoting the logical and orderly development of areas within the sphere by removing the county island as part of the project. Therefore, staff recommends to the city council adoption of the environmental document, recommends approval of the annexation, pre-zone, and development permit. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for any questions, and the applicants also in attendance if you have any questions.
I have a question. So for the properties that are currently there with the sewer and water running, even if they're, please tell me if I'm wrong, even if they're not annexed, at some point, they're going to be required to hook up to that water and sewer, is that correct?
So they would have to be annexed, and then...
So if they're not annexed, they never have to hook up?
I believe, my management will help a little bit with the annexation portion.
Yes, thank you, Israel Trejo, Planning and Development Department. So Commissioner Bray, if they are required within the annexation boundary, at certain timelines, they will be required to connect to water and utilities, and I think your question was, if they don't annex, are they required to connect? And the answer is no.
So if their well fails, will they, and they're not annexed, can they dig another well?
So they would go through the county and comply with county requirements.
So they could?
Yes. I do, would like to just speak briefly on how this annexation boundary came about. So this, this boundary is consistent with Cortez-Zinox, as Thomas mentioned, Cortez-Zinox-Hurtsburg standards, and those standards are implemented by LAFCO. And so we met with LAFCO, as well as with the county, and we determined that pursuant to the requirements of Cortez-Zinox and LAFCO, that a logical and orderly boundary was the entire island, so the two southerly properties where the development is going, as well as the three properties to the north. And would also like to note that this, this project, this is kind of step one for this application, so this is a recommendation to city council, and also goes to the LAFCO Commission, where they can protest at both of those stops as well.
Thank you, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
What you do, go ahead, that's fine.
If the two parcels at the north were to be excluded, would LAFCO reject that?
Potentially, they potentially could, I can't speak to that, but they can, they can, so if the, if the recommendation goes to LAFCO with all of the five properties as recommended to the Planning Commission, LAFCO can take out those, those three properties to the north.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Do we have the applicant here?
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Chair. I represent, Steve Torres, representing Legacy Real Estate Development and Legacy Construction. Just want to thank you for looking at this project, but want to give a couple of background features that make this so important to us. The growing need for the northern Clovis, northern Fresno needs is growing. We see the district, the school districts, and especially the developer, the pediatric dental facility, they've acquired this property since 2019, and we've been going through this process, but the community need is still there, right? And it's been a long process, but it's, it's, I think it's needed for the community, and we got to make a decision so we can help our clients move forward, not only with the pediatric dental, but all these professional services that is growing in the northern Fresno. So we were just talking about a previous project that's even north of this, right? And we see where the development is going, so we're excited to get it started, it'd be an amazing facility. We've had, you know, a lot of cooperation with other residents who are excited about the expansion, but also the services that will be provided along this corridor. So the Herndon Corridor for medical needs has kind of outgrown itself, and we need to keep moving forward, so. Any questions?
Questions? Go ahead.
If approved, when would the project begin?
So with current plans, there's a code cycle change that's coming up here at the beginning of 2026. We're modifying the plans due to the extension of this. We're actually absorbing these costs just to actually comply with the new current CBC standards, so we're currently redesigning a lot of these to the new CBC standards and just trying to move forward, so as soon as we do get approval, we can start on phase one of this immediately. We estimate the construction duration, just with long lead times, is still probably about a year of construction duration, but I believe, you know, phase one could, can happen within the year, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. We'll go ahead and go to the public. Do we have any individuals who would like to speak in support? Any individuals who would like to speak in opposition? I see none. We'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have any additional questions, any additional comments or motions from the commission? Yes, that's fine.
Yep. So my only question is, you know, the opposition, the letter that we got from the family, do they have any resources available if they're not able to, you know, pay for fees and stuff? Are there any resources available to families like that?
There are, as Thomas went over in his presentation, I believe there's either a 10- or 15-year loan, Dion can probably speak to that, but there is a loan program that's implemented through the Department of Public Utilities. John, is it, is there, is that a 10-year or 15-year?
Good evening, Commissioners, Diane Pavich with the Department of Public Utilities. We offer three types of loans, two are for sewer and one is for water. They have a fixed annual rate which changes on July 1st, but it is fixed for the duration of the year, and currently it's 4.6%. Water would cover fees or any extensions that they may need, even when well abandonment, if that's required. Sewer has two components, it is for sewer connection fees and anything that is in the right-of-way, and the other component is for work that they need to perform on their private property to connect to city sewer. Both are administered by city finance department, but initialized by Department of Public Utilities.
My other question is, they said something about grandfathered in for animal, I guess they have animals, so are they going to lose that privilege?
So no, the, as part of the proposed, or the recommended pre-zone, we're adding the ANX overlay, which is, you know, annexation overlay, and any uses that are legal today, legal in the county, they can continue with those uses indefinitely.
Great, any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made by Commissioner Shergill, we have a second by Commissioner Diaz. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Motion's approved. Next, we have any reports from the secretary?
Good evening, Chair, I do not have a report for you tonight.
Do we have any unscheduled oral communications? I see none. It's currently 6:34. Everyone, have a wonderful evening, may these adjourn.